Please rise to salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, the liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, call the roll.
Counselor Vido.
Present.
Counselor Zaneda.
Present.
Counselor Recupero. Counselor Garcia.
Present.
Counselor Vega Maldonado.
Here.
Present.
Counselor Robinson. Counselor Rodriguez. Counselor Taylor.
Here.
Counselor Lopez.
Here.
Counselor Brown.
Here.
Counselor Zabit.
Present.
Ten members present.
At this time, I'll announce if there's any memoriams or celebratory resolutions. Counselor Robinson has a late resolution that I will read.
Yes, it's Elizabeth McBride who is turning 100 years old.
It's in recognition of Elizabeth McBride, who's turning 100 years old, who just turned. And it reads, whereas Elizabeth McBride was born to John and Nellie Sullivan on February 6th, 1921, in Cambridge, Massachusetts, one of six children, and later moved to Chelsea, Massachusetts, where she spent the majority of her life. And whereas Elizabeth would become a cheerleader and track star at Chelsea High School, and whereas she met her husband, John McBride, at Chelsea High School, and they were married July 3rd, 1943, and shared 68 years of marriage and welcomed eight children, 16 grandchildren, eight great-grandchildren, and two great-great-grandchildren. And whereas Elizabeth has raised her family, worked actively in Chelsea politics, there she led the Bluebird Troop, was president of the PTA, became chair of the school committee, and was a strong advocate for teachers and education. And whereas Elizabeth was a delegate to the Democratic Party and first female member of the Kiwanis in Massachusetts, and eventually received the NEA Lifetime Achievement Award. And whereas on February 6th, 2021, Elizabeth reached the impressive age of 100 years, young. Now, therefore, we, the City Council and the City of Chelsea, in recognition of this remarkable milestone, do hereby proclaim Saturday, February 6th, 2021, to be Elizabeth McBride Day. And we urge all citizens in Chelsea and entire Commonwealth of Massachusetts to take cognizance of this event, participate fittingly in its observance, given this day, this fifth day of February in the year of our Lord 2021 and of the Independence of the United States of America 245th. Sponsored by Counselor Leo Robinson and all members of the Chelsea City Council. Counselor Robinson?
The end is under suspension. I'll be brief. Liz McBride actually served this community for a number of years as a school committee member, being involved in the Chelsea Kiwanis Club. And given back a lot to the kids in this community. I just want to wish her a happy birthday. Thank you.
Counselor Brown?
Thank you, Ms. President. I also like all of the remarks. She was a great person, a wonderful woman. When I first moved to Chelsea, I moved on Murray Street, which was right around the corner from where she lives at, still to this day. A great dedicated public service. I just wanted to say happy birthday to her. Wish her all the best on this year as she celebrates her 100th year of living. She was very active in the city. When she was out there on the ballot, she would be out there. She would be at celebrations here. I remember her coming out for Johnny Ruiz when he won the heavyweight champion of the world. We're all out here in front of City Hall, and she was out there just a cheerleader for everyone. So she was all about Chelsea. I remember all her energy, her excitement about Chelsea. And I'm just so happy for her family and wish them all the best as they celebrate this year. I hope they have a better day ahead of them where they can get her out, take her out to one of her favorite places where she can just enjoy it for a few hours and just have a great time. Happy birthday.
Counselor Todd Taylor?
I'd also like to wish Elizabeth McBride a very happy 100th birthday.
Okay.
And my best wishes to all the McBride family. Again, I'll just echo what my colleagues have already said. And, you know, ever since I've been living in the neighborhood, they've been a friend, the family's been a friend to me, and I appreciate them and I wish them all the best.
I noticed we don't normally allow the public to, but at this time, I will allow our school committee delegate, Rosemary Carlisle, to say a few words.
Thank you very much. I know you're not supposed to do this, but I really appreciate it. All I can say is Liz McBride was a mother to every student in the city of Chelsea. She was there for all the kids. I served with her for 17 years on the Chelsea School Committee. And Liz was there because she wanted to be there. She wanted to take care of the kids, make sure they got an education. She was an advocate for PTOs. She was an advocate for making sure the lunches were getting, the kids were getting the right lunches. And she was a special lady, and I am proud to say that I am a neighbor of hers, and I grew up with her children. She was a wonderful mother, and her and John brought up the children in a special way. She told them to respect people and respect everyone that you get involved with. And happy birthday, Liz. I love you. Thank you, Roy.
You're welcome. At this time, just to accommodate a request, I'm going to take out of order the public speaking portion first. We'll go to the public hearing on the zoning, but I am going to go to public speaking first and allow Josh Kraft to address us at this moment.
Hey, thank you, Roy. And I just want everyone to know how incredibly touched, moved I was with the Josh Kraft way, really. My daughters were with me, and I was really emotional. I mean, I always say that after my family, the most important people and places to me in the world is Chelsea, and all the great people I met there like Liz McBride. Happy birthday, Liz. It's awesome, man. But I saw the meeting, and, you know, Leo, Calvin, and Mr. Recupero, and Counselor Vido, your work has really meant so much to me. But I can't tell you, it's all of you and all the great people in the city that impacted me and changed many memories I'll never forget. So, and of course, City Manager, Amarcino Tom, thank you also. And it means so much to me, but really, it's all of you that means so much to me and all the great people in this great city. So I just wanted to zoom on here and thank you all.
Thank you. If there's anyone on public speaking, not having to do with the zoning at all, just public speaking, if there's anyone here that would like to address us on that? If not, we will now go back to our number four item on the agenda, which is the public hearing. This is a public hearing in regards to the proposed zoning amendments that will be on tonight's agenda. If you have any comments to say in regard to the zoning amendments, please step up to the microphone and state your name, your address. You will have four minutes.
Mr. President, thank you, Tom Amarcino, City Manager. I'll be very brief, because I know there are many speakers here. I just want to go on record as saying I'm certainly in favor of this package of zoning amendments, many of which we submitted. They all advance important interests of the city. They were tweaked a bit by the Planning Board, and we are perfectly comfortable with those changes that the Planning Board has recommended to you. I do want to say they kind of fall into three buckets, so you're aware. There's the Municipal Harbor Plan, proposed zoning changes that are important to advance the proposed Municipal Harbor Plan that is going before the Secretary. There are sort of the package of housing changes that I propose to increase density and what I hope would get at, an opportunity to increase some housing opportunities in the city, which I do consider the number one challenge facing us in the next, in the years ahead. And then there's a final small group of changes to our marijuana regulations, which will open up that industry in a more equitable way to what I hope would be some minority businesses in the community. So I just, with that said, urge you to consider approval of the entire package that's before you. Thank you.
If there are anyone else who'd like to speak to the council in regards to tonight's zoning amendments?
Hi, good evening. My name's Joe McNamie from Eastern Salt Company at 99 Marginal Street. I wish to comment on the zoning. First, I want to say thank you to the city for its thoughtful approach to Port District as it relates to maritime businesses. My second comments are regarding the Waterfront Upland District, along Marginal Street, from Pearl, along Marginal Street at Pearl to 200 Marginal, the building we're currently donating to the city to help with the pandemic food distribution response. We've currently been receiving several people whose companies support offshore wind-to-energy business, and we'd like to ask for more flexibility in the Waterfront Upland District. This great business with great paying jobs. Hopefully, some of them will choose our Chelsea properties. We're not asking for a yes. We'd like to request special permits for a few categories on the table. We're requesting that, by special permit in the Waterfront Upland District, fabrication and storage, marine construction, marine intramodal transportation, bulk storage of cargo and freight, and container operations, marine cargo handling facilities. We think these changes would uniquely position our properties in Chelsea to quickly pursue the emerging offshore wind business. And Chelsea would have a special permit process to determine if the business is a good fit. Thank you for your consideration.
I just have a couple of questions. I know this is the end of the process regarding the zoning of marijuana delivery.
Clerk, can you please state your name and address for the...
Mary Ellen Monahan. I live at 9 Bosens Way at Emerald Hill, Chelsea. And I just have a couple of questions. One, they both regard the zoning that's being proposed for marijuana, marijuana delivery-only business in the Naval Hospital area where I reside. And I'd like to know, was there a mandate? And I know it was voted on in 216, as was explained to me. I also was told there was a relatively margin, very small margin in terms of the pros and the negatives. So I'm asking the council whether there was a mandate to change the zoning in the resident's community to delivery only, to allow delivery-only marijuana. Question number two is, I know there's great concern regarding, I shouldn't say there's great concern. I believe there's some concern or some priority when you do a retail business relating to security, security. What are we doing to ensure the security of the business? And there's obviously reasons for that. My question is, are there any security concerns regarding a resident delivery marijuana business? Those are two questions that I do have.
Thank you. Just for clarification, the public speaking portion is not a, allows the City Council to answer questions, just to hear the concerns of residents. I'm sure that we'll be willing to, any member here will be willing to send out an email or respond directly, or maybe the city manager, if you wanted to reach out to the city manager, to, by email, he can explain to you, along with assistance from our city solicitor, as to those issues that you raised and what is, to those questions. Would like, anyone else like to speak in public speaking portion? Seeing none, we'll now move on to the next portion of our meeting, which is approval of the minutes. Do I have a motion to adopt the minutes from our last meeting?
I make a motion to adopt our last-minute meetings anonymously, unanimously under suspension if there are no objections.
Counselor Garcia makes a motion to adopt, accept and file the minutes of our last meeting under suspension, seeing no objection. So moved. We now have a communication from our city manager in regards to municipal electric aggregation. Dear counselors, I am writing to request formal City Council approval to submit the city's municipal electric aggregation plan to the Department of Public Utilities, DPU, for approval. As you may recall, the city's plan, known as the Chelsea Electric Choice Option Electrica de Chelsea, was subject to a public hearing and public comment period. Although the city received no formal comments, public reaction was generally positive. Following the public hearing and comment period, the plan was submitted to the Department of Energy Resources, DOR, for its review and commentary. That process has been completed to the satisfaction of D O E R. A copy of the letter of January 27th, 2021, DOR letter is attached. With DOR consultation completed, the plan is now ready for final submission to DPU. I had previously promised that the City Council had a final say before the submission. I am now requesting authorization to make that submission. The full plan is available on the DPW's page of the City of Chelsea's website and through the publicly available site, chelseelelectricitycitychoice.com. Let me once again review the process that remains before implementation. Assuming the council approves the submission to DPU, it may take as much as six months for DPU to approve the plan. Following the DPU approval, the city will then, through a formal RFP process, solicit competitive bids for a municipal electric supplier. Once the new electric supplier is selected and the contract is executed, then the city will notify by mail all members of the community who have EverSource's basic service, meaning that they have not signed a contract with a different electricity supplier, that they are eligible for automatic enrollment in the city's new plan. The letter will include information about program prices, program options, and current EverSource basic services prices, customer rights within the program, and a required disclaimer that savings cannot be guaranteed. All customers who are eligible for the automatic enrollment will have the opportunity to opt out before the switch. The letter will include information on how to do so. In fact, the letter and the mails have already been developed in our attachments B1, B2, B3, and B4 of the Chelsea aggregation plan. Finally, the city will ensure that the customers will be able to opt out at any time thereafter without penalty. Excuse me. At this time, I respectfully ask for the authorization to submit the plan to DPU. A draft order for that purpose is attached. Do I have a motion from the council?
The suspension, will be something coming up on the new business?
Counselor Robinson asked that we accept and file the communication. We have something under new business. Seeing no objection. We have the next communication from the city manager in regards to MassSave Municipal Partnership Grant. I am writing with another request to this grant, to accept a grant this time. It is a municipal partnership grant through MassSave, funded by EverSource and National Grid. Copies of the grant documents are attached. The grant has a maximum value of $25,000, depending upon participation. The grant will be managed by the Department of Public Works. The purpose of the grant is to raise awareness and increase participation in MassSave energy programs in environmental justice communities like Chelsea. Due to the barriers such as language, high rate of renter-occupied units, and lack of public education, communities like Chelsea have historically under-participated in MassSave energy efficiency programs. These programs are largely free to our residents, but can make significant improvements to energy efficiency and can lead to a reduction in utility bills. This is the second year that the City of Chelsea has been awarded the Municipal Partnership Grant. With the 2020 grant, the DBW was able to significantly increase participation in energy efficiency programs and achieves most of its targets established by EverSource and National Grid. DBW is ready to take on similar challenges with the 2021 Municipal Partnership Grant. The grant funding provides salary for an intern to oversee the program and covers the cost of printing, mailing, and marketing materials. At this time, I respectfully ask the City Council to accept the 2021 Municipal Partnership Grant. A draft order for that purpose is attached. What is the wish of the council?
Accept and file a communication under suspension. There'll be something coming up on the new business?
The Counselor Robinson asked to accept and file it under suspension. Seeing no objection, we will move on to the next communication.
Grant from Beth Israel Leahy Health. Dear counselors, I am writing to request acceptance and approval of a new grant from Beth Israel Leahy Health in the amount of $600,000. This grant to address the local impacts of COVID-19 is specifically intended to fund two programs. $400,000 for the Chelsea Housing Legal Aid Bureau to maintain its operations for the next 12 to 18 months, and $200,000 for the Chelsea Eats Program. A copy of the award letter is attached. In accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44 and 53A, I am requesting that the City Council formally approve the acceptance of this grant. A draft order is also attached.
What is the wish of the council?
Accept and file under suspension if there are no objections. There'll be something coming up on the new business?
Seeing no objection, that communication is accepted and filed under suspension. Next communication?
St. Luke's Funeral Fund. Dear counselors, I am writing in response to the request that the city consider providing $25,000 in funding to St. Luke's Episcopal Church to support its funeral fund. After review of the balance remaining from the COVID-19 emergency appropriations provided by the City Council last spring from free cash, it appears that we do have sufficient funds to comply with this request without need for any further appropriation. Naturally, this funding will be limited to support funerals only for those families unable to make such payments due to the economic impacts from COVID. There is some work that the city must do to ensure this support is in compliance with the Massachusetts procurement laws. Most likely, we will handle this by contracting directly with a funeral home, pursuant to state law, and then directing St. Luke's Church to send its invoices from the selected funeral home for payment by the city. The city will work out these details with the parties over the course of the next few weeks.
I make a motion to accept and file unanimously under suspension if there are no objections?
Seeing no objections, that communication is filed under suspension. Counselor Robinson?
This $25,000, is that going to be added to the $10,000 that we previously committed on? And is that going to make this $35,000?
Through the chair, the Counselor Robinson asked me to ask the city manager if the $25,000 is in addition to the previous allotted $10,000.
No, it turned out that we never ended up giving St. Luke's the original $10,000 because our procurement process was a little onerous at that point. We think we figured out a solution to make this work for him now, and so we'll just give him the $25,000, and that will be the total amount for this fund.
The next communication from the city manager is communication in regards to the capital improvement project, sorry, the, yes, capital improvement plan submitted for the 2022-2026. City councilors, pursuant to my obligations under 5.4 of the city charter, I hereby submit to you my proposed capital improvement plan for fiscal years '22 to '26. The enclosed capital improvement plan continues the city's commitment to utilize our resources and fiscal strengths for the purpose of enhancing the quality of life in our city. The proposed total investment of FY '22 is in excess of $14 million. This is similar to our post-pandemic level of investment in '21. The list of projects includes roadway repair, school building maintenance, major underground utility work, and open space improvements. I recognize that our response to COVID-19 has required the city to expend significant capital, and therefore, our reserves are lower than they would have been, they have been in several years. Nonetheless, I feel it is critical for the city to continue to invest long-term in its capital improvement, capital projects that improve the city, even as we consider to seek to rebuild our rainy day funds. In accordance with the charter requirements, I ask the City Council to move this capital improvement plan to a public hearing following that hearing and the council's final determination on this plan. I will prepare a recommendation order for implementation of FY '22 proposals. I look forward to working with you and to accomplish the goals of the newest plan. Counselor Robinson?
Communication and establish a conference at a later date.
And also set up a public hearing?
Excuse me?
And also accept a public hearing.
Public hearing, yes.
The communication has been accepted. We will send this to subcommittee and also set up a public hearing in regard to the CIP. We have now a communication received from Counselor Taylor in regards to illegal use of fireworks. Dear colleagues, as you know, the City of Chelsea, like other cities in the towns across the country, experienced an enormous amount of noise from illegal use of fireworks during the most inconvenient hours of night and for long periods of times. Mind you, most of this was not for an Independence Day celebration. I have asked the city solicitor's office to review our city ordinances and find a way to prevent such disturbances, or at least minimize them in the future. The new ordinance will give a violator a ticket in the amount of $300 and no warning through our 21D process. Our public safety departments and inspectional services departments are key to the enforcement of this new ordinance and are currently able to issue citations, tickets to the violators. By issuing the tickets and tracking them, the next offense would go a long way with the criminal enforcement of the state law. I am willing to discuss this matter further with the city's administration and subcommittee. However, I think the changes to our code of ordinance is in the best interest of our residents. Counselor Taylor?
Move to accept and file a communication under suspension if there's no objections?
The Counselor Taylor asked that we accept and file this communication under suspension. There will be something coming up in new business.
Okay, now we move on to unfinished business.
Under unfinished business, we have the three proposals before us. Proper zoning ordinances, proposed zoning ordinances, proposed Municipal Harbor Plan, and the proposed changes to off-street parking requirements.
So there are three motions in front of us that are property before us for a roll call. But what is the wish of the council?
On the first one before us, which would be the proposed zoning ordinances.
Okay. We're moving. If the clerk can please summarize what we're looking at?
Yes, you're looking at the proposed zoning ordinances. Now, therefore, be it ordained that the revised code of ordinances of the City of Chelsea, as amended, be further amended and adopted and ordinance revising Part 2, Chapter 34 of the Chelsea Code of Ordinances to add the following zoning provisions. And you have all the provisions before you.
There are three provisions before you.
About seven in this particular one.
Seven in the particular first one. So Counselor, Chairwoman recognizes Counselor Aviyanada.
We need a motion.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to adopt on a roll call vote.
What is this? This, excuse me, is this all this right here?
Yes.
The front part.
That, and plus all the other two behind it, or just that one?
There's three separate ones.
Three of them. The three in front of you. What is the motion? What's the wish of the council?
Motion to adopt on a roll call, if I may speak.
You have the floor, Counselor Aviyanada.
Thank you. At this time, the recommendation from the Planning Board was that the Amendment 6 was struck. And I asked that we strike that, it was not recommended for approval, and that we strike Amendment 6 from the amendments as a whole.
The whole part of 6?
All of 6. And that we, until such time, we have something that can be approved by the Planning Board, we strike that until further future reference.
So the motion before us is to strike Amendment 6, which is known as Off-Street Parking Requirements, Section 3, 34, 106J.
That's correct.
Do we have anyone else who wishes to speak? Yes, Counselor Recupero.
You've got to know this package as it is, right? There's no changes to it.
He's just striking Item 6.
It's striking Item 6 on that item. So if you go to page 3...
What's in Item 6?
Item 6 was the article in regards to off-street parking requirements, then that would allow any relief from off-street parking requirements to be disqualifying from the participating city's parking sticker program if they receive this special permit. And then, notwithstanding, they would then encourage a new parking program for just the downtown area. The planning department, sorry, the Planning Board voted down this proposal. There were many questions raised during that meeting in regards to whether there'd be any, if the existing buildings in the downtown area would now all of a sudden be subject to just new downtown, or was it just new ones? So without that clarity, and some, quite frankly, some objections raised by the Planning Board to a downtown parking area, given that the City Council had stated... to a downtown parking area, given that the city council had stated anyone with a special permit should not qualify for it, it was rejected. So I feel that this part of it should be just slashed out until we come back with something that may pass the approval of the planning board.
So the amendment before us is to strike item six. Does anyone else wish to speak on the matter before us, which is the amendment to strike?
I do have an amendment in regards to that. And if the clerk can read it for the record?
Yes.
If this is adopted, then you can offer your amendment.
Okay.
So we amend, we take this as the way it is, and that's it, right?
So just to clarify, the amendment before us is the amendment proposed by councillor Avellaneda, which is to strike Amendment 6. It is properly before you for roll call. If you vote in favor of his amendment, it passes, and it does not give an opportunity for another council for another amendment. If his amendment does not pass, then it gives an opportunity for another colleague to present another amendment before us, and then you can vote on that one. Is that clear? Thank you. Anyone on, I see councillor Brown, and then councillor Vido.
I just actually have a question for clarity. The motion that actually we're speaking on, it talks about Article 34V, 5 for off-street parking. It actually has Consul Robinson's name on it. I thought that was the, I'm not sure what's going on here, but Consul Avellaneda said it's his motion, but it has a different name on it.
Those are two different, that's, that's.
That's yours?
Yeah. Councillor Leo Robinson has presented something completely different.
Which is this?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
So what's in front of you now is what councillor Avellaneda presented on the floor as an amendment, as a roll call. If you vote against that, then you can properly have councillor Robinson's amendment in front of you.
So do we all have Consul Avellaneda's amendment?
So right now, right now, through the chair, right now councillor Avellaneda's amendment is the one properly before us, which is to strike Amendment 6. So you can ignore councillor Robinson's amendment for the moment because what's properly in front of you right now is councillor Avellaneda's. Councillor Avellaneda's amendment is what's properly before you. You can either vote in favor, you can vote against.
Can I explain a little bit?
Yes, through the chair, councillor Avellaneda, you have the floor.
I understand my colleagues, my colleague has presented a amendment tonight also, and it can be confusing. And so I just want to clarify. As I mentioned, as this was presented, to create a downtown parking program for those buildings that received a special permit to not build enough parking spots, that was defeated and not recommended by the planning board. There were questions as to why they would circumvent what we set up, that if you want to build anything in Chelsea and you get a special permit, that you will not participate in the parking program. Because if you're going to make the argument that there aren't, you know, you don't have cars, you're going to, your residents are going to take the T and all that, all that stuff, then you can't come back and say, oh, by the way, I'm shoving all the cars of my residents onto the streets is aspirating the, that area. And that was fair. It was, it was fair to say. The creation that was proposed by the city manager and his staff to go around that position by the city council was to say, well, maybe we can do an overnight program just for downtown. And what wasn't clear was by creating a downtown overnight parking program for those buildings that get special permits, would it also now include the existing residents in downtown who currently are in the parking program and would lose the ability to park all day? So because of that confusion and because some members of the planning board felt that it was a circumvention of the will of the city council, they rejected it. Now, that was, we went to subcommittee, and it went to the planning board. We discussed in the subcommittee, we went to the planning board. They made their vote, and now it's in front of us tonight. My fear is that, I hope you will pass this. If it passes, then we go moving forward, and we won't even talk about Consul Robinson's amendment. And I think it is dangerous for us to consider my colleague's amendment because that amendment didn't go to the planning board. That amendment doesn't have any input from the community, didn't go to our subcommittee, and is making this from scratch right now without any input to date. And I don't think that is fair. I would much rather have him submit that amendment later on, on its own, to a conference and also to the planning board for a full review, and then come back up to us and say, this is the planning, we should have it, and not debate this or consider it right now without going through the very same process that all these other amendments have gone through. So that's, that's why I'm asking you to vote yes tonight on my amendment, so that if this one, if Consul Robinson wants to push that in, great, but let's go through the formal process that all these other ones have gone through with full due process. Thank you.
Any other councillor wish to speak? I saw councillor Vido had her hand raised. You're on mute.
Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So I will be supporting this amendment. So I am in agreement with what Consul President Avellaneda is saying. However, I just feel that it's, I don't know if it's me because of the pandemic and everything is through Zoom. It's all very confusing, all of these amendments coming before us, where we're trying to explain what's happening back and forth. I don't, I don't know how comfortable I feel. I understand, I understood, and thank you, Consul President Avellaneda for explaining that, but I don't know that I fully get the entire grasp of what we're voting on here today. I just kind of, I'm hesitant to send it to a subcommittee because I don't want to extend the time any longer, but I just, I almost feel, I don't know if any of my other colleagues feel this way, but I kind of feel like maybe we should regroup and talk about this one last time. I'm not submitting a motion at this moment, so never mind, I will be quiet. I just needed to state that.
Thank you, councillor Vido. Anyone else wish to speak? She didn't make a motion. No motion made. Councillor Todd Taylor?
I agree with my colleague councillor Vido on this. I think that probably it would be worth another regrouping to try to talk out some of these issues instead of trying to have a new amendment coming up right now and voting on it. I'd like at least the opportunity to discuss what all the ramifications are. And I think councillor Avellaneda, President Avellaneda, made a good point where the new amendment didn't go through that process, and we should allow it to go through that process before we make a decision. So I would be in favor of sending this back to conference.
Any other member? I see councillor Giovanni Ricupero, and then councillor Robinson.
When we vote on this package now, right? We voted directly on what, his amendment? Or we voted on the whole package?
So to clarify, thank you, that's a great question. The only matter properly before you is the amendment that councillor Avellaneda wishes to make. So right now, the motion is roll call for the amendment. So you're not voting on the package yet? You're voting on making a change to Amendment 6, which is off-street parking? You're making the amendment for, you said Amendment 6?
In front of us, in front of us, in front of this packet, there are seven amendments. There are seven amendments in this vote tonight, right now. Amendment number one would change the table for the R2 district and be renamed 1 to 6 units on table, and then the former apartment table would be renamed 7-plus tables. So you'd say, instead of it saying 1 to 6, it's going to be 1 to 3, and instead of apartment, it'll be 7-plus units. That's what's first changed. Amendment two would change the dimensions and regulations in the R2 district per dwelling unit density. 1 to 6 units would be 3,500 for unit 1, and then 1,000 for each additional unit, but not less than 5,000 square feet. That's one amendment. Part of Amendment 2 is for 7-plus units. The first unit, again, you need a minimum of 3,500 square feet, and then 950 square feet for each additional unit with the requirement of a 10,000 square foot lot. So if you wanted to build seven units minimum, you'd need 10,000 square feet. If you wanted to build anyone from 1 to 6, you'd need a minimum of 5,000 square feet. But you'd need at least 3,500 square feet for the first, and then 1,000 for each additional. So if you wanted to build 6,000 units, I'm sorry, 6,000, I don't want to scare anyone. Six units, you would need the first 3,500, and then 5,000 additional feet.
Councillor Avellaneda, the question is, the amendment in front of us is to only change Amendment 6. That's what he's asking.
That's correct, but, but.
The roll call in front of us.
But the clarification is, if we vote in favor of my amendment, we're also approving all the other ones in front of us. My amendment simply strikes number 6 because the planning board did not want us to pass it. So I am following their recommendation that we not approve Amendment 6 and create a downtown parking sticker program. The letter from the planning board said no to that. It's included in front of us, but if we are to follow their recommendations, we approve everything that they have already done except number 6.
Okay.
That's what I'm doing.
Okay. So does that answer your question, councillor?
We just need number 6 that he wants to change. Everything else is the way it is. Okay.
He wants to eliminate.
So what are we going to vote on now? Is amendment to get rid of number 6?
Yes, get rid of number 6.
Okay, so in number 6, what do you want to do, Roy? Let me get this straight. You just want to get rid of it altogether?
Correct.
So that have to go back, so anybody can park whenever they want to?
No, because.
No, it would just eliminate the resident parking. So this, so what is the final motion in front of us, councillors? Because if there's a lot of questions back and forth going, then we should be sending this to conference.
Okay.
What is the motion before us?
A motion is in front of you to strike Amendment 6.
Okay, so we move on to strike to Amendment 6. Councillor Robinson?
In regards to his amendment, for the record, the amendment that I want to offer would be sent back to the planning board so they would have an opportunity to act on it. I think for clarification, if I might ask the clerk, should we take up the amendment first and then go to?
You're taking up the first amendment.
After that, you could also offer more amendments.
Yeah.
I mean, it doesn't end it.
Right.
So the proper amendment that we have in front of us is councillor.
In other words, I could take all your amendments right now if you want, and number them, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, right. So it's up to you how you want to handle it. We're going to handle his amendment first, and then we're still open to amendments.
Okay, so we will handle councillor Avellaneda's amendment first, and if anyone else wants to submit amendments, we can reopen to that. I see councillor Vido.
I just point a clarification. Once we vote on councillor Avellaneda's proposal, does the entire packet become law, or will we then vote on everything?
No, this particular part of it.
Just that part, right?
Just this part, we're accepting amendments to this.
So we're just voting on number 6?
We're just voting on number 6.
Consul Ricupero, I can't hear them.
Please, go ahead. The only one speaking right now is a city clerk. Anyone else who wishes to speak speaks to the chair.
The proposals before you were three proposals. The first proposal, Consul Avellaneda offered a amendment to strike out item 6 as recommended by the planning board. But after that vote, we still are open to amendments of this particular item. If there are no more amendments, that would be adopted as amended by Consul Avellaneda alone.
Then I make a motion to move this to subcommittee on conference.
You're making a motion to move it to conference?
Yes.
The motion before us is to move to conference. Clerk, can you clarify?
Yes, we're going to vote to move it to conference. If you vote yes to move it to conference, the entire thing goes to conference. On this particular one, then you can take up the other two items also. Now, let me write that down.
Are there any discussions, any other comments? Seeing none. She did, the motion in front of us is just this amendment in front of you. This one right here, we move this to conference.
The whole package?
The whole package.
The whole package, Consul, or just that item?
You're talking to me?
You want the whole package?
Yes, councillor, councillor Vido.
Thank you. So I, there's so much confusion, and I hate to make this worse than it is. So before us is planning board recommendations with a bunch of recommendations. Consul President Avellaneda is recommending that we slash 6 out of those recommendations. My question is, after we vote on the planning board recommendations, will we then vote on the entire matter? Because if, if it's going to get adopted as amended, I think that we should be sending this to a subcommittee because there is so much confusion.
And you made a motion, and the motion in front of us is to move this to conference?
Right.
Correct, but then the city clerk asked me if it was on the three, the three items, and I'm not sure what three items we're talking about.
No, he's asking if it's, if it's on the package itself or just the amendment?
You have three separate.
There's three separate items in front of you. So is your request for the first item, so in your packet, is it the, are you requesting to move this to only Amendment 6, or are you requesting to move the entire package that includes amendments?
Can you ask councillor Robinson to stop interjecting? It makes it very difficult for me to hear you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yes. I missed it. To ask councillor who?
Robinson continues to answer, and he's speaking over you, and I can't hear what's happening.
Got it. No, well, it's pretty quiet here. No one's speaking over me. Maybe there's a laid back here.
You have the waterfront district proposal, you have the downtown parking proposal, and you have this one here before you. Do you want to send all three items to conference or just this particular part of it?
At this moment, I am only speaking about the zoning ordinances that is being, that is in question. So item A under unfinished business, correct?
Yes, okay.
Yes. I am making a motion that we send that to subcommittee on conference.
Okay.
The motion properly before us is to send item A, which is this document, to subcommittee on conference. A yes vote is to send it to conference, a no vote is to not.
To keep it before you.
To keep it before us and vote on the matter.
Okay. Consul Vido?
Yes.
Consul Avellaneda?
No.
Consul Ricupero?
What are we sending to conference, the whole package?
This one.
The whole thing?
Just this, just not, none of these. Not these, just this, just this.
The whole thing?
Just this.
Consul Garcia?
Yes.
Consul Vega Maldonado?
Councillor Melinda Vega Maldonado?
Yes.
Consul Robinson?
Yes.
Consul Rodriguez? Absent. Consul Taylor?
Yes.
Consul Lopez?
Yes.
Consul Brown?
Yes.
Consul Zabat?
No.
Yes or no?
She said no.
No. 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7 in favor. Three opposed, one absent. That particular part goes to conference. Now we have the waterfront, let me see, the amendment.
So now councillor Ricupero, please, no more side conversations. It's very difficult to concentrate and move on.
We have the waterfront proposal changes before you right now.
What is the wish of the council? Councillor Avellaneda?
Move to conference.
Move to conference.
Motion before us is to move to conference.
On a roll call or suspension?
Unanimously under suspension.
Under suspension.
Okay. And the final part of that package would be the commercial overlay waterfront, commercial overlay.
Okay, so now we have, we have the overlay matter in front of us. What is the wish of the council?
That one there.
Yep.
What was the one we moved before?
You just did the waterfront district, board district, with the amendments. You just did the waterfront district, board district, with the amendments. Yeah, that one.
So now we move, so we, now we move to...
The last part.
The last part, which is the waterfront residential commercial overlay district. What is the wish of the council?
We'll send that to conference.
Move the, move the subcommittee.
So the motion properly before us is to move to subcommittee under suspension?
I'm confused because I'm, yes, because I don't see the packet about the downtown area. Where was that?
The downtown area packet is the one included in the first one that you voted on. The first one.
Well, they're all going to conference.
So the downtown marijuana one is also in conference?
No, no, no.
No. That's something else.
Okay.
Okay, move on.
Okay, now we move on to the next item on...
Second reading, second.
Now we move on to second readings, which is a communication received from City Manager Tom Ambrosino in regards to reappointments to boards and commissions. If the clerk can please read the names of the appointees.
We have the reappointment to the Board of Assessors, Fella Goldberg, and Kathleen Conlon. For reappointment to the Board of Health, Ms. Ola Bayoti, Richard Jackson Jr., and Dr. Dean Zerres. For reappointment to the Board of Library Trustees, Ms. Beth Novak, Ms. Christina Lawson, Shaw Burns, Christina Lawson, Shaw Burns. And for reappointment to the Board of Registered Voters, Mr. Michael D. O'Shea. Reappointment to the Conservation Commission, Mr. Steven Sereikis, Judah Dyer, and Devin Braun. For reappointment to the Council Elder Affairs, Ms. Rebecca Swope, Antonio Ortega, Greg Walzak. For reappointment to the Council of Council, Ms. Marlene Jennings. For reappointment to the Economic Development Board, Ms. Titiana Bouda-Vera. For reappointment to the Traffic and Parking Commission, Ms. Rene Hibbert. For reappointment to the Zoning Board of Appeals, Mr. Joseph Mahoney, and Ms. Marilyn Vega Torres.
What is the wish of the council?
The roll call vote.
Counselor Brown moves to a roll call vote.
Counselor Vidal?
Yes.
Counsel Avellaneda?
Yes.
Counsel Recupero?
Yes.
Counsel Garcia?
Yes.
Counsel Vega Maldonado?
Yes.
Counsel Robinson?
Yes.
Counsel Rodriguez?
Absent.
Counsel Taylor?
Yes.
Counsel Lopez?
Yes.
Counsel Brown?
Yes.
Counsel Zabat?
Yes.
Ten in favor, none opposed, one absent. The motion for reappointments is approved.
That motion is adopted? Point of inquiry is, what's, what's your question?
There was several different ones. It was downtown Broadway and it was Parkway.
There's a point of inquiry on the floor regarding...
That's all I had was these three.
Counselor, city clerk, if you can clarify.
That's all I had was those three that I mentioned.
So there were three items properly before us, this is regarding zoning. Those are the three items properly before us. We now move on to the next section, which is new business. Order introduced by Counselor Avellaneda in regards to authorizing the city manager to submit to the Department of Public Utilities the city's municipal aggregation plan. What is the wish of the council?
Motion to adopt on a roll call vote.
Counselor Avellaneda moves to adopt under roll call vote. City clerk?
Good.
Are there, do you wish to speak on the matter? Okay.
Counsel Vidal?
Yes.
Counsel Avellaneda?
Yes.
Counsel Recupero?
Yes.
Counsel Garcia?
Yes.
Counsel Vega Maldonado?
Yes.
Counsel Robinson?
Yes.
Counsel Rodriguez, absent. Counsel Taylor?
Yes.
Counsel Lopez?
Yes.
Counsel Brown?
Yes.
And Counsel Zabat?
Yes.
Ten in favor, none opposed, one absent.
Now we move on to the next item in our agenda, which is order introduced by Counselor Avellaneda in regards to authorizing the city manager to accept the 2021 municipal partnership grant. What is the wish of the council?
Motion to adopt on roll call vote.
It's properly before us under roll call vote. City clerk? Counselor Brown?
Thank you, Madam Vice President. I'll be voting in favor on this. I think it's a very good thing, a partnership grant to give us, I believe it's twenty-five thousand dollars, it's something we've had in the past. It's an effective way that we can use this money with the DPW to go out and educate people about enhancing our community, the effectiveness, the effectiveness of partnership by going into dense areas or going into areas where there's some kind of barrier, it could be a language barrier where people are not aware of what we're trying to do to expand the service and the quality of life. This grant allows us to go in and talk to folks and let them know what the city is trying to do to make the city better and also enhance the city and improving the quality of life around them. So I think, again, it's only twenty-five thousand dollars, but it's something that worked in the past. We go out and we send some leaflets. I believe last year we had a notice in the newspaper letting folks know what we're trying to do so you wouldn't be scammed if someone knocked on your door and asks you to buy into something that you're not aware of. Again, this is something that a lot of cities are doing. They go out and they try to improve their cities. So I think it's a great thing. Again, it's a grant, it's money that we can use. I know, I spoke to Fidel, he said in the past, we also use some of this money as to hire an intern to go out and work with communities their English wasn't their first language. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak? Seeing none, we move on to roll call vote.
Roll call. Counsel Vidal?
You're on mute. Counsel Vidal?
Counsel Avellaneda?
Yes.
Counsel Recupero?
Yes.
Counsel Garcia?
Um, yes.
Counsel Vega Maldonado?
Yes.
Counsel Robinson?
Yes.
Counsel Robinson?
Yes.
Counsel Rodriguez, absent. Counsel Taylor?
Yes.
Counsel Lopez?
Yes.
Counsel Brown?
Yes.
And Counsel Zabat?
Yes.
Ten in favor, none opposed, one absent. Motion adopted.
Okay, now we move on to the next item in our agenda unless there is another motion on the floor for us.
No. Order that the city manager instruct and enact every department of the city to provide physical and hard copies of any form of documentation to residents when requested.
Can I ask for a five-minute request, a five-minute recess and a question?
The, there is a, what's your motion again, Counsel President, so everyone can hear you? Can you speak on the mic?
Five-minute recess.
Request for a five-minute recess. Is there any opposition to a five-minute recess from the council? Okay, so we will take a five-minute recess. We will be right back. We are back to, we are back from recess. Thank you, everyone, councilors. We are moving on. We continue under new business and the item in front of us. City clerk?
We have the order introduced by Counsel Lopez and Counsel Recupero, order that the city manager instruct and enact every department of the city to provide physical and hard copies of any form of documentation to residents when requested.
What is the wish of the council, Counselor Ennio Lopez?
Adopted under suspension. If there's no objection, I would like to speak.
Okay, you have the floor, and the motion is to adopt an item under suspension. If there are no objections, Counselor Ennio Lopez.
Yes, I would like to say that I had an experience trying to help my constituents, and this person went to try to get a copy from one of the departments in the city. When we went there, I actually went with them too, and they, they just pointed at the window, what is, there was a website. And because these people didn't know, they went before and they just went away because they didn't understand. And so when I went there looking for a copy, they just pointed at the website. And the reason I put this today is because this is a lot of people in Chelsea, the immigrant community, a lot of people don't know how to use computers, don't know how to send emails. And to have someone that don't even speak the language for the person who's looking for the, for the copy, I think, you know, we should have a, people should get the, what they need, copy, a hard copy for whatever can be, an accident report, can be at the school, city clerk, or anywhere. That's the reason I put this, and I hope we can, you know, try to help our community. Thank you.
Counselor Recupero?
I agree with what my fellow counselor says. A lot of times people go to these places and a lot of them don't have access to computers, a lot of them don't know how to use computers. So you should have the choice. If you want it on computer, fine. If you want it on email, fine, but you should also have the choice to get it on a piece of paper. They shouldn't force you to get it exactly that way because that's not freedom. Freedom is of choice. You should have an option. If you don't have an option, what choice do you have when they say to you, this is the only way to get it? And a lot of people don't, don't have, they don't have where to go and get it. They don't have a computer, they don't know how to use it. I know I'm going back to the same thing, but I think it's fair that all of us should have an option. You shouldn't be just restricted to one thing. And this is a good thing, that when somebody asks for a piece of paper, they should get it. They shouldn't say to them, well, go look in your email, I'm sending it to you. If he's asking for a piece of paper, that person should get a piece of paper. If he's asking for email, that person could get an email. And if that person is asking to be put on a computer, fine. We should all have a choice. That's what I believe, and I think our country was founded on that, the freedom of choice.
Thank you. I see Counselor Vidal.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Perfect. I just, I'll be quick. I just, this is an issue of accessibility and making sure that we're reaching everyone that there, if there are people that don't have internet or access to the, to the computer that they're able to get a paper version of it. I'm excited that we are getting a diversity, equity, and inclusion person. We're going through the hiring process now, so hopefully that, these are things that there'll be someone to pay extra attention to things like this. But it's just a matter of accessibility, and I just want to shout out my colleagues in service for putting this forward. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak on the matter? Seeing none, we move on to the next item.
Request that the city manager instruct all city employees utilizing city vehicles to follow snowstorm guidelines, specifically when there is a snow emergency. City vehicles should not park or remain parked on main streets during snowstorms or other emergencies.
What is the wish of the council?
Would you like to speak on it?
If there are no objections, Counselor Ennio Lopez? You have the floor.
Yes, I've been seeing city vehicles parked on main streets, especially when there's a, it's no emergency. There's one official vehicle that's parked always on the 100 Broadway, never moves. There's around City Hall on Washington Avenue, that's a main street, especially on, when there's a snow day or an emergency. Those vehicles should be moved, just like anybody else. Keep space to, to the people who are cleaning the snow, just like any resident of the city. They have to move the car if they know they tow it, right? So how come they don't tow these cars? So that should be moved.
Anyone else wish to speak on the matter? Seeing none, we move on to the next item.
Order introduced by Counsel Recupero, order that the city manager instruct DPW to immediately fix the handicap ramp at City Hall on Washington Abside.
What is the wish of the council?
I'd like to adopt under suspension, I'd like to speak on it. If there's no objection?
Okay, Counselor Recupero, you have the floor.
I go downstairs, I come in and I look, and I see, that's deplorable. What happens to poor people with wheelchairs? They need to come up and there's giant holes, all on that side. So that should be fixed. It shouldn't be like that. What if you can't push yourself and you get stuck? What happens to that poor person when there's a giant hole where it's supposed to be? Now, the city should have at least more, paid more attention to stuff like that because that's very important. God forbid any of us fall like that. Would we want to go through that? I don't think we would. We would want something that you can go up and down, and that's deplorable. It's got giant holes and it's been like that for a while. I think all handicap ramps within the city should be fixed. All handicapped people should have access without killing themselves to come to the building. And I believe they should be done right away. It shouldn't be a time, something to wait because a handicapped person with a wheelchair can't wait.
Thank you, Counsel Recupero. Anyone else wish to speak? Counselor Vidal?
I want to thank my colleagues for putting this forward. We have a lot of work to do in really being able to acknowledge people that are, that abilities are different than the average, than what we, we expect. But I, I have full faith that with this new position of DEI, of diversity, equity, and inclusion, that we'll have someone that will be paying close attention to those issues because it's not just a matter of we should have it, we have to provide it by law. So I'm looking forward that, to having someone that will pay close attention to that, to make sure that we're being more inclusive overall. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak on the matter? Seeing none, we move on to the next item on our agenda.
Order introduced by Counsel Recupero, order that the city manager instruct DPW to ask the utility companies to patch the hole on the bottom of Highland Speed and Marginal Speed.
What's the wish of the council?
I'd like to adopt under suspension, I'd like to speak about it.
Okay, you wish to adopt unanimously under suspension? If there's no objection, City Counselor Recupero, you have the floor.
Okay. This is something important too, I believe it is. All utilities company come in, they dig holes, and then they don't fix them. The city spends thousands and thousands of dollars to fix our roads. So they come in, they dig them up, and then they leave sinkholes, right? And we should make them fix it, the way they got it, the way it should be. Because if you dig it up and you don't put it the same way, then the sinkhole's there, like on Highland Avenue. I know they're going to redo all of Marginal Street, but the sinkhole still exists, and that's not the only place. You go around our city and you will find that many, many holes are that way with these utility companies. Come in and do it. The utilities company charge the people more money and they have more money that they know what to do with. So the taxpayer pay for the road, they come in, they break it up, then they throw a little patch on it and say, oh, it's done. And then the road looks crappy. We pay for that road, the taxpayers pay. They take our money, and in return, they should be obligated to fix it the same way that they got it. Because it takes a while for a street to get done. It's not the street gets done in one day. It has to go through many processes before it gets done. And once it's done, you don't want to see it broken two days later and looks like crap all over again. So why shouldn't they return and fix it? I think we do have some type of provision in our city that makes them fix it. So I think it's time that we implement the way they have to put it back the way it was. Maybe not do the whole road, but if you dig up a hole, put it at least where it's normal, where it doesn't sink in, where, and if it does, you come back and fix it. And that's what we should make them do, because I think it's the right thing to do. They don't give us free energy. So what should we give them, a free pass on fixing our roads?
Anyone else wish to speak on the matter? Seeing none, we move on to the next item in our agenda.
Order introduced by Counsel Robinson, order that the city manager provide information to the council about an update of small business assistance and their participation in the local Chelsea Chamber of Commerce.
What is the wish of the council?
Suspension?
Do you wish to speak on it?
I'll be brief. Just that, we're, we're helping local businesses, and I was curious to see if any of those businesses that we helped actually came out and joined the Chelsea Chamber to help the chamber grow and be able to provide maybe some more assistance to other businesses in this community.
Anyone else wish to speak on the matter? Counselor Vito.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I just, I'm a little concerned, because I don't know that we really can report on what's happening with the Chamber of Commerce. I mean, I, I feel like, yeah, we can talk about money that we've given the small businesses, but the Chamber of Commerce, Commerce, it's an entirely different entity. So I, I don't really understand that.
Is that a question through the chair, or are you presenting?
I guess. I mean, I, I just can't understand, I just, I guess I object to the, to the, to the last part of it. I just don't understand how we can have any say or question as to what happens out of here. I think it's completely overreaching. Yeah, we can report on the small business loans and the things that we have capacity over, but I just don't understand. So I, I mean, if, unless the counselor that presented it can clarify it, then I would object to this order.
So you wish through the chair to ask a clarification to the counselor?
I do, Madam Chair.
The reason for this was a request to see if any of the people we helped, in turn, might have joined the Chamber of Commerce. It's a simple yes or no answer, either they join the chamber, or they didn't join the chamber. All right? So we could evaluate the money that we're giving to local businesses. We overall get the benefit from it.
Counselor Avianneta.
I understand where Counsel Robinson is going, but I also understand what Counsel Vito is saying, that, and I'm speaking as member, former executive director of the Chamber of Commerce and lots of experience with the chamber. But to Counsel Vito's point, it shouldn't be that as a condition of money received by the city, that you therefore had to join a local nonprofit organization that happens to be a business community. Because the two have nothing to do with each other, I feel. The, the, the chamber, yes, we like them, and we want to partner with them, and they are our go-to to work into the community and such. But to kind of say, well, you know, the city gave you money, so you should be a member of the chamber now. That's, I don't think that that's the type of message we should be saying to anybody. And so I, I would, I would, you know, I would challenge that in any way. I mean, for that very same reason, you would, you would say, well, as a member, why not also join the Rotary? Why not join this? You know, it's just, I don't know. It just, it rubs, I think it rubs the wrong way. There are many ways that businesses can be active, members of this community, part of our social fabric, without being a member of any particular group. And I'm sure there are plenty of businesses out there that don't belong to a membership and are probably great stakeholders in this community. So I don't want to measure, you know, the assistance given by the city official taxpayer money as a somewhat indirect endorsement, that that was a caveat, that you're, that meant that you had to join a particular organization.
Counsel, oh, sorry.
Anyway, I'm, that's all I have to say on that.
Okay, Counselor Todd Taylor.
So I don't disagree with President Avianneta or Counselor Vito in the fact that, yes, I, I think that that shouldn't be a requirement to get, to get the funding, nor should the government insert itself, again, in the business of business, you know, in order to, in order to, you know, be a control freak. But I don't think that's what this order is about. This order is, is only asking for information. And if it, if it is the legitimate, if, if it's the legitimate power of this body to foster business in Chelsea for the benefit of its residents, then I think that this could be a helpful way, not to say that, well, you know, anybody that gets money should join the, join the chamber, but it gives us an idea of what the situation actually is on the ground, so that, you know, a lot of times, these businesses might benefit from, maybe, maybe some of them wouldn't. And again, it's up to the individual business owners to do that. I wouldn't want to push that on anyone. But I do think that a lot of these businesses might be able to benefit from membership in the, in the, in the chamber. And I think if it's our duty, our legitimate duty, to kind of try to foster business activity in the, in the, in the city, for the benefit of all, I don't see anything wrong with this order, if it's asking for information.
Okay. I see Counselor Leo Robinson.
Clarification. Here's what, here's what the order reads, that the city manager provide information to the council about an update of small business assistance and their participation in local Chelsea Chamber of Commerce. There's no mention of that you have to join the Chamber of Commerce. All I'm asking for is information on whether or not any members who receive benefit from the city, that they join the chamber. I think it's a very simple question to ask.
Thank you for the clarification. Counselor Vito.
Thank you. I'd like to move that we strike everything after assistance, because I think it's, it's, we can ask information of the city manager within the confinement of City Hall. We can ask about what's happening at Chelsea Chamber of Commerce. I think it's overreaching, I think it's inappropriate. And quite frankly, the people that were tasked with the third-party contract to facilitate the funds, was the nonprofit out of the Chelsea Chamber of Commerce? I think we might have some of our wires crossed. So I move that we strike everything after assistance. And if that's the case, then I'm okay with it being adopted unanimously, otherwise I will object, object to it.
So essentially, you're objecting to adopting unanimously under suspension. Do you want that under roll call?
I guess if that's the only way we can propose it, then sure. But I am.
So you want the amendment?
Yes.
You want the amendment? Do you want that under roll call?
Yes.
Okay. So the, what's properly before us is an amendment to strike anything after assistance, and she wants that under roll call. Any objections?
Any more discussion?
Any more discussion? Any more discussion? Counselor Brown.
Question. Can you just read the order as it would be voted on?
Yes. Clerk, can you please read for Counselors?
The order that we're voting on?
The amendment. Do you want the amendment?
The amendment would read, if you adopt it, it would read that the city manager provide information to the council about an update of small business.
Assistance.
Assistance. Counselor Recupero.
So what are we taking rid of? Their participation in the local Chelsea Chamber of Commerce?
Yes, exactly.
So that's what we're gonna, we're gonna strike that out?
Yeah, correct.
Okay.
Okay. So that is what Counselor Vito is proposing before us under roll call. A yes is you're in favor, a no is you are against, and you leave it as it was originally presented to you.
Okay. Counselor Vito?
Yes.
Counsel Avianneta?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Recupero?
Yes.
Counsel Garcia?
Yes.
Counsel Vega Maldonado?
Yes.
Counsel Robinson?
No.
Counsel Rodriguez absent. Counsel Taylor? Counsel Lopez?
Yes.
Counsel Brown?
Present.
You can't vote present, Counselor. You have to vote yes or no.
It's not an order.
You have to vote yes or no. We don't allow rules of president. That's the school committee.
Okay. Does the city manager provide information to the council about updates, small business assistance? And what manner? It's not a complete sentence.
That's it. So it would stop at a small business assistance, and then you would strike everything from, and their participation. It ends at assistance.
Counsel?
I have to vote, vote no.
No. Counsel Zabit?
Yes.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven in favor, one, two, three opposed, one absent. The amendment carries the motion. The next order is introduced by Counsel Avianneta, order that the city council hereby accepts and approves a $600,000 grant from Beth Israel Leahy, held to be used as following. $400,000 for the Chelsea Housing Legal Aid Bureau, and $200,000 for the Chelsea Eat Food Debit Card Program.
What is the wish of the council? Counsel Avianneta?
Motion to adopt on a roll call vote.
Roll call vote, under roll call vote. Is there any, do you wish to speak on it? Is there any discussion? Counselor, Counselor Recupero, and then Counselor Brown.
I agree with this, right? The only part that I have issues with is with the $200,000 for food. The people, I got pictures of people sending it to me, where they get, we have to have a different system for this food program. I can show you pictures.
This is the eats, the debit card program. This is not, this is the debit card program.
This is the debit card program?
Yes. The Chelsea Eats debit card program.
But it's still the same thing, right? We're still giving food away, right?
No. The debit card program that we passed, the debit card program that we passed is an actual card that residents receive.
Food debit card.
Exactly. The Chelsea Eats Food Debit Card Program.
By application.
So they can use it for food, right?
They can use it for food, yes.
By application.
By application. They were, it's a lottery process. Did I see another hand? Counselor Brown.
Thank you, Madam Chair and woman. I just want to thank Beth Israel for Leahy, for this generous donation. Again, this donation goes to help in two ways, especially here in Chelsea, where we've heard so much about the need for Chelsea residents. There's a lot of folks throughout the Commonwealth that really stepped up and helped Chelsea. Earlier this evening, we were talking about rental assistance for folks that's being now, being ready to be evicted out of their property. This is the grant money that comes to the city by someone goodwill towards us here in Chelsea. They recognize that the city of Chelsea could use this money. There's really good people here that can use this money. And this money goes, the first $400,000 goes to help for legal aid, to help prevent folks from either with their rent, going to court, legal service, and help, helpful information. And the other $200,000 goes out to folks on the, what we call Chelsea Eat Food Debit Card, but again, which helps folks. You don't have to be poor to receive this, folks. You don't have to think of a person being poor to get this here. We're obviously in some difficult times. It's been a really bad time for a lot of good people that's lost their jobs over the last 12, 14 months, and something like this helps. So I really want to thank the organization. I want to thank our city manager to reach out to these programs, to show that they still have goodwill towards Chelsea. A lot of cities wish they had what we have. I know there's some waste out there, but there's a lot of good families out there that can use this money. So I'm just grateful that we had an opportunity to get another $600,000, where we don't have to directly take it out of our budget to help out folks that's really in need. Thank you, Madam Chairwoman.
Thank you, Counselor. Anyone else wish to speak on the matter? Okay, seeing none, we move on to the next item. Oh, I apologize, I apologize. Roll call vote.
Counsel Vito?
Yes.
Counsel Avianneta? Counsel Recupero? Counsel Garcia?
Yes.
Counsel Vega Maldonado?
Yes.
Counsel Robinson?
Yes.
Counsel Rodriguez absent. Counsel Taylor?
Yes.
Counsel Lopez?
Yes.
Counsel Brown?
Yes.
And Counsel Zabit?
Yes.
Ten in favor, another pause, one absent. Next order introduced by Counsel Avianneta, home rule petition. Now therefore be ordained by the city council, the city of Chelsea as follows, that a petition to the general court accompanied by a bill for a special law relating to the city of Chelsea be filed, with an attested copy of this order be, and hereby is approved under clause one of section eight of article two as amended of amendment to the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to the end, to the end that legislation be adopted precisely as follows, except for clerical editorial changes of form only. Home rule petition, section one notwithstanding, any general or special law to the contrary, the city of Chelsea may impose a local sales tax upon sale or transfer of road, salt, or related products by a taxpayer with salt storage operations within the city of Chelsea at a rate not greater than 1% of the total sales price received by the taxpayer in consideration for the sale of road salt. The taxpayer shall pay the local sales tax imposed under this section in the same manner as personal property taxes. Section two, this act shall take effect as of July 1, 2021, and shall apply to the taxes levied for the fiscal years beginning on or after July 1, 2021.
What is the wish of the council? Counsel Avianneta?
To a subcommittee in conference.
We move to a subcommittee in conference. You're not standing for suspension? Okay. So now the next item before us, we move on.
Next item is introduced by Counsel Avianneta. Now therefore be it, hereby ordained that the revised code of ordinances of the city of Chelsea as amended be further amended and adopted as follows. amend chapter 14, licenses permits miscellaneous business. Regulation article 11, marijuana establishments as follows. Replace in its entirety section 14-459, limitation on number of marijuana retailers with the following. As authorized by Massachusetts General Law, chapter 94G and 3A2, the number of marijuana retailers operating within the boundaries of the city of Chelsea be limited to a maximum of six.
What is the wish of the council? Counsel Avianneta? Move to a second reading. Do you wish to speak on it?
Briefly only that, in light of some of the delays because of voting on marijuana expansion, I feel that this time, this vote should be just waited until we have all of that in the same night conjunction. So I'm moving to a second reading, and anyone who has any questions regarding this can see me privately.
Great. Counselor Brown.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to plead to the residents out there, this is something that has been moved to the second reading, I mean, not a second reading for our next meeting. I think we should really be aware of this here. This is an order to revise the codes ordinance to deal with marijuana establishments in, in Chelsea. I mean, when the law, or when the petition was on the ballot in 2016, it nearly passed here in the city of Chelsea, and by passing in the city of Chelsea, by its passage here in the city of Chelsea, there were stipulations of what we need to do, and how many marijuana establishment programs would have to be set up according to the license we have here. This year, I think it's something that we need to really pay attention to, because this goes beyond of what the intent of what the law was when we voted on it, that if you live in a certain community and you pass the ballot question, your community will get a certain amount of number of establishment. I just think we're moving too fast here. We have four establishments. I believe we have three under contract right now. We have one more, we have one more establishment out there licensed available, if it's not already taken. We're taking, we're tackling with delivery proposals, with delivery marijuana. We haven't gotten a grasp on that. We're in a pandemic. A lot of folks are not aware of what's going on. They don't have really the reasonable time to come to City Hall, because we're lacking. We don't allow a lot of people in City Hall. So I think to be making all these big decisions about marijuana without letting the public really have an input, or really say so about what goes on in their neighborhood, I think it's a disservice to the community. I think we should just really wait till when we can engage the, the community, and before we start asking other folks to come to Chelsea, because we're going to have six more marijuana establishments available. We have one right now that's really up and operational, and it's right now, just getting on. This is a lot of endeavorings that we have here, and I just think it's just too many because what we've already been through this past year, and because potentially what can happen with the dispensaries. If you get an additional six, then you're going to have license, then you're going to have everyone setting up shop here. And that wasn't the spirit of the law when the ballot question was put on the ballot to each community. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. I, I believe there's a point of clarification that, that the author wants to make, so I'll go there, and then Counsel Vito. Counsel Avianneta?
Just a point of clarification. This is not an additional six. We currently have four, and the number change would be a total of six. So we're actually only adding two more from four to six. So we're not going to have an additional six, which would, which would mean we'd have 10. That's not the case here. I just want to make sure that my colleagues and those at home are very clear on what this is. We currently have four, and the amendment would increase it to six total. So we really are just adding two more licenses. And in light of what we had proposed for the downtown area, I thought it made sense. But again, just to clarify, this is not six more. The counselor is wrong in saying that and telling residents that we are adding six more. That's not the case. We're going from four to six. That's two more. Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Damali Vido, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to, can you all hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I just want to, I, I will be supporting this measure, and I'm really grateful that Counselor President Avellaneda has put in this forth. The way that it happened was the law didn't narrowly pass. I mean, that's not how it works, right? It either passes or it doesn't. And it passed here, and I believe the margin was about 10%. So I, I mean, it was a majority of the community voted for us to be able to have recreational marijuana. Then the number is established by the number of liquor licenses, and so that comes down to a total of four. And so what we're seeing, because then after this, this passed, the, the law passed, was that the state started to really look at it and say, well, look, we're seeing that communities that were mostly impacted by the war on drugs were black and brown communities and immigrant communities and poor communities like Chelsea. So let's try to build some equity here because the folks that were coming into our community were people from out of state with affluence. And so this is just an opportunity to try to level the playing field. And the same activists and advocates that have been pushing for us to be more diverse and more equitable and more inclusive are the same people that have been advocating for this. So I don't think that we're necessarily moving too fast. In fact, I think addressing the old drug wars that disproportionately affected our communities, I think we're way behind the eight ball. And government cannot stop simply because one counselor feels uncomfortable. We need to really face this head on by making sure that we're crafting policy and legislation that is going to prioritize the most vulnerable in our community. I will be 1,000% supporting this, getting everyone in the community to learn the facts because we as counselors have a responsibility to spread facts and not mistruths. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Counselor Vido. Counselor Recupero, you have the floor.
From what I understand here, we want to increase it from four to six. From what I, you know, other cities do it. What this would do, if we increase it to six, what it does, it gives an opportunity to more people to apply and maybe some minorities or someone that's low or whatever it is will be able to get one. We shouldn't be limited just to four if, because there's already is four. So we should have an opportunity to at least, I don't know. I believe that this is not such a bad thing. Six things ain't so bad. We're only increasing two. We're giving the opportunity to other people, a couple of people, to do it. There's nothing wrong with that. I know the state says we can only have four because I was here when they did all that because you can only have four according to the size of your city. But, so by, if we pass this, are we bypassing the state or we doing our own thing? What are we doing? We bypassing the state law and allowing extra or we going along with the state? That's the part that I don't understand. Are we going, the state says four. So if we increase it to six, are we allowed to increase it to six or there's going to be some kind of something that says, oh, you can't increase it to six? So what is this actually? Let the people understand what this actually means. Does it mean if the counselors pass for six, the city cannot turn around and say, you can't do six? They have to put six? Or if we vote, let's say, to put six and the city says, state law says you can only have four?
Yeah, that's a great question, Counselor Recupero. We're not voting on this. It got moved to a second reading, so that gives you plenty of time to ask.
I understand you're going to move, but I'm saying, this is a point that should be brought up, you know?
We can't answer it on the floor.
The state says we can have four.
Got it. We can't answer it on the floor. We're moving it to a second reading so it can be answered then. So when it properly comes before you give a vote, you'll be equipped. Thank you. So now we have moved on to second reading. Any more comments on the matter? Counselor Todd Taylor, the floor is yours.
I'll be brief. The only thing, I think that this is not just a matter of social justice, although I do agree with what Counselor Vido said about the war on drugs affecting minority communities in a disproportionate way. We have to also think about how the marijuana laws in the state are set up. The, the apprehension I have about adding additional licenses is, is it going to affect the people who have already invested money in their licenses, in their current licenses? Right now, legal marijuana costs a lot more than marijuana on the street. So, so the market is not a true market. And so I'm worried economically speaking that adding more licenses will denigrate the kind of, you know, the people that have already put up the money and established their, their businesses. I understand that marijuana is a big business and could generate a lot of money, but until there's some sort of, you know, relaxation of the, of the, of the state laws, you're never going to get a true market because illegal marijuana will always be a lot cheaper. And people who have been smoking marijuana have been buying it that way for a long time. So, you know, I, I, I just see, it's not just about social justice. It's, it's about economics as well. And I think that, you know, well-intentioned things can have bad outcomes if you don't think it through. So I, I just would ask people to think about these things too. And I don't know what the answer is. I don't know how I would vote on this, but, you know, it's something to consider. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Taylor. Anyone else?
Can I just make a quick comment since I was mentioned by name?
Counselor Vido.
I just, I just want to say, I, I, I've heard, I heard the counselor before me. I heard him speak earlier about government should be impeding a business, and now we're talking about, we, we have questions about the, the economy. And so I just, you know, I, I hear it, but also I just want to make sure that we're just being very clear and transparent about what we're talking about here because it's almost like we're talking about two sides of our mouths.
Thank you, Counselor Vido. Anyone else wish to speak? Okay, we move on to the next item, and the, it's an ordinance introduced by Counselor Brown, I'm sorry, Counselor Taylor with regards to amend chapter 16 at a new subsection. So I will go ahead and read what is before us. Whereas the Chelsea City Council has authority to adopt ordinances to protect the health, safety and welfare of all residents of the city of Chelsea, whereas the Commonwealth of Massachusetts pursuant to MGL, chapter 148, section 39, has made it illegal to possess or use fireworks and levies, a fine up to only $100. Whereas Mass General Law C40 grants to city authority to preserve the peace and good order within its jurisdictions, whereas the City Council of the city of Chelsea finds that the city's general peace was disturbed on numerous occasions and throughout all hours of the day and night, whereas the city, the Chelsea City Council has authority to adopt ordinances to protect the health, safety and welfare of all residents of the city of Chelsea. Now therefore be it hereby ordained that the revised code of ordinances of the city of Chelsea as amended be it further amended and adopted as follows. amend chapter 16 miscellaneous offenses and provisions. Article VI offenses involving public peace and order as follows. Add a new section to 1699 noise control as follows. Fireworks. The use of fireworks subject to section 39 of chapter 148 of Massachusetts General Law shall be defined to constitute an unreasonable noise under this section notwithstanding the other provisions of this section. The penalty for first offense use of fireworks shall be $300. Further amend chapter one general provisions, section one through eight general penalty, criminal and noncriminal disposition add to the table in section one dash eight C, a new row as follows. Noise ordinance fireworks, section 16 slash 99O, $300 any offense. Police officers, firefighters and inspectional service inspectors. What is the wish of the council? Counselor Todd Taylor.
So.
What's your motion, Counselor?
My motion is, is to.
Move to the second reading, Counselor.
Second reading or roll call?
Second reading.
Move to, move, I'll move to a second reading.
You want to move to a second reading? Okay, Counselor Todd Taylor has motion to move to a second reading. Do you wish to speak on it, Counselor?
Yes, just briefly.
Of course, go ahead.
So I'm, I'm, it's February and, you know, the, the spring and then the summer will be upon us. I wanted to address this problem before July comes so that there will be ample time to kind of address the situation so we don't have a repeat of last year. So I'm willing to, you know, I, I went to the city solicitor and we talked about this, about how to, how to kind of make the ordinances just a little bit stronger to discourage some of this stuff. I'm very willing to send it to conference if, if that's, so we can talk about different types of things that we can do. I'm very open to collaboration on this, so if that's what people want to do, that's fine. But I do think that this caused a major problem last year. And I think most people on this council got.
Clarify.
You know, I, I know I got dozens and dozens and dozens of calls, some all in one day, about, about the noise of the fireworks going off at 3:00 in the morning. There is ample will in the general public to do something more about this issue. So I would ask for indulgence on that. Thank you.
Okay, so the motion in front of us to clarify is to move to a second reading, correct, Counselor Taylor? Not conference?
Yes.
Second reading? Okay. Counselor Brown, go ahead. Counselor Brown and then Counselor Naomi Zabit. Counselor Brown.
Thank you. I just want to commend my colleague. We had a lot of discussion about this throughout when it was going on. We was chasing Sammy Mojica down and tried to get him every night. I'm looking forward to it. I was glad to see that we got something in writing that the city solicitor believes there's something that we can go after if we find out the enforcement behind this and catch those perpetrators is doing it. We had a really tough time up on the hill leading up. I believe it also had much more to do with some of the spirit of the time of what was going on, the pandemic, people were locked in their houses, the tragedy incident with Mr. Floyd. So I just hope and pray that we don't have to live through that again. None of those accidents, tragedies, nor the noise that kept the kids, the veterans, the folks that were just losing enormous amount of sleep, had to get up and try to struggle and go to work the next morning. So I'm looking to, forward to this committee to talk about enforcement and how we go about it. And really, $300 is a lot, but if that's what it takes to deter someone from not doing that in an appropriate time, then I hope the city will back us in this. Thank you.
Counselor Zabit.
Thank you. I would just like to also commend my Counselor Taylor on bringing this to the forefront of a discussion. It's not only this past year that it's gone on. It goes on every year extensively around July 4th and before, leading up to it and a little bit after. And for anybody who has a pet, anybody who has anybody in their family or themselves suffers from PTSD or just likes the quality of life of not having to hear the fireworks constantly, this particularly this past year, I was hearing from a lot of constituents that it was extremely, extremely challenging to have to deal with this for an extended amount of time, not just a little bit before July 4th, but leading up to, for months that was going on and then months afterwards. And this, as I stated before, this has gone on in Chelsea every summer. It was particularly bad this past year. So I'm, I'm delighted that this is, this council in full support. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Zabit. I see Counselor Vido.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I have mixed feelings about this, and the part that really bothers me is the, the hefty citation, the fine. I think this matter should be moved to a subcommittee on conference. I think it definitely needs further conversation, and, and it's not something that we should be voting on the floor. I just want to say that I have a dog, and in this area where we have fireworks, my dog goes crazy, and that we have neighbors in the area that also have complaints about, about the noise. And not only the noise, but the mess that it leaves behind. So I get that it's something that we should address. And I myself am trying to reflect on my own conditioning because to be honest with you, my mentality when I hear a loud noise and I look outside and it's a firework, fireworks, the first thing I think about, oof, thank God it's not a bullet. So like for me, my mentality is a little different. I also feel like we live in a city, and like if we want quiet, then we should probably move to the burbs. I'm not saying I'm against this, but I'm just offering another side because there are people in the community that think that finding someone such a hefty fine is a bit ridiculous, especially when we weren't even willing to find people for not wearing masks in the face of a pandemic. So I mean, we're talking about people that are unemployed. We're talking about people that have been laid off, people can't pay their rent, people can't pay their mortgages, and we're talking about fighting them $300 for having a good time. Now granted, their good time should not impede another's quality of life, but it's a conversation that I think requires more, more of a discussion in order for us to find something that can work for everyone.
Thank you, Counselor Vido. So what we have properly before us to send it to a second reading, are you making a motion to send this to conference?
Move it to a, absolutely.
Under suspension?
If there are no objections.
Conference? So it's properly before us? So.
Conference under suspension?
Conference under suspension or roll call?
Any objections?
Are there any objections? Conference? Okay, there's no objections, so we move to conference. We move to conference. Oh, I'm sorry, you want to speak on the matter?
Move it to conference, right?
Yeah, we move to conference. Oh, you're okay? Okay, great. So that is the last item on our agenda. Now we move on to announcements. Are there any announcements? Any counselors wish to make any announcements? I see Counselor Damali Vido.
Thank you. I just want to thank Council President Avellaneda for putting, placing both Counselor Robinson and I on the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Hiring Committee. We went through a round of interviews last week. We got amazing candidates, and I'm really feeling hopeful that hopefully that we found, that we narrowed it down to a couple of folks that the city manager would feel comfortable hiring. And I just really want to give a huge shout out to our city solicitor, Shava Watson, who chaired that hiring committee. It was a beautiful, inclusive process where everyone, we just, we challenged each other. We asked the right questions, and I believe that we got down to the, to the, to the best candidates that we could find to lead this really important department. So thank you, Counselor Avellaneda and City Solicitor Shava Watson. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else wish to speak? Any announcements from any other counselor? Public announcements, any public announcements? Counselor Recupero, go ahead. You have the floor. Do you want to speak on the mic, please?
The only public announcement is this. Please, if you get food, don't throw it away. I see food that it's given to people throwing in garbage cans. That's a bad thing. Other, a lot of people need it. I'm in favor of giving food to anybody that needs it, but I'm against wasting the food. Give it to somebody that needs it. And por favor, no bota tu comida en la basura. Mucha gente necesita comida. Si tu cojas tu comida, no la bota. Si tu no la quieres, no la coges. Eso es más importante. La cosa importante es si tu la necesitas, aquí te ayuda que te la da. Si tu no la necesitas, no la coges de otra gente que la necesita. Porque si tu la bota, tu no estás haciendo cosa buena. Tu estás haciendo malo a una persona que la necesita. Gracias.
Muchas gracias, Consejo de Recupero. Thank you, Counselor Recupero. Now we move on. Are there any more announcements? We move on to moments of silence. Does anyone have a moment of silence? Counselor Brown.
Thank you. I just want to have a moment of silence for a person I became friends over the years, boxing legend who fought Muhammad Ali, upset Muhammad Ali at the early career, early time of his career, who passed his life this past Friday, Leon Spinks, brother of Michael Spinks, the two gold medal winners and the two, two medal winners in the Olympics.
Any other moments of silence? Meeting has been adjourned.